Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the central jury room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. I have asked Dr. Bill Miller, who always arranges for us to get a pastor from all the churches in Hood County, to pass that up so that we can conform to the presidents and governors' deal about keeping the number of people down in our audience here. And so I've asked Judge Cotton Howe if he would go ahead and give us the invocation this morning. Judge Howe.
All right, Mr. Pratt. Emily Fodler, we know that you're not wringing your hands wondering what to do about all this. You have a plan, Father, and we trust in you. I feel very safe in saying everyone here this morning, Father, realizes that you have put us in a position to be in a forward position in this county. And so, Father, what we ask for today is your wisdom. As we pray, you settle us with your wisdom as to how to handle the business for the people that you have put in our charge here in this county. So watch over us, Father. Let us seek you. Let us open our hearts and our minds and let your wisdom come into us to conduct your business. And, Father, we ask all this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Now, everybody join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Would you please join in the Texas pledge?
In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all. Okay, there are no special presentations today, and there are really no citizens out here. At the special meeting we had on Thursday, this past Thursday, I made the announcement that if you did not have any real business on the agenda, to stay away so that the people that did could be here and so that we're complying with all the mandates from the President of the United States and our governor. And I think that we have. So if anybody does have anything and want to say something, you have public participation deals that you can fill out. I would like to announce today that due to the good, hard work on the part of Drew Whitaker and Warren Owen, I forgot how to pronounce Owen's last name, but he knows who he is, they have arranged for us to livestream this meeting here today. And these livestream cameras are now available in all courtrooms here for Hood County. So they did an outstanding job and able to grab these cameras here and so that we can really comply with the Open Records Act. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Do any of the commissioners wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Okay, a motion's been made by Commissioner Dever to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes, five zero. Okay, that brings us to Road Ops, Mr. Donald Lenny. You don't have anything today, sir?
No, sir, not on this.
Okay. So now we have Clint Head up here with development. Mr. Head.
Good morning, Judge, and Commissioner. First item we have this morning is a replat of tracks 1 and 2 of Oak Country Estates. The replat is properly was approved by the Commissioners' Court only since 2016 to 2018. That replat is not recorded or filed for review. Configuration of the common lot lot had to be changed and is back for the purpose of money for approval.
Okay, well, hold on one second. I guess since this is a public hearing, we're going to adjourn. Yeah, we're going to adjourn from the Commissioners' Court right now into a public hearing to discuss these five replats here that we have discussed in previous Commissioners' Courts, correct?
I think we have to do them one at a time, Judge.
Do we? Yeah, but there are five in total.
Right.
Yeah, and we're going to do them one at a time.
Yes.
But we're now in session or in public hearing to discuss each one of the five. Please go ahead, Mr. Head.
This proposed replat will be creating a 4.02 acres track called Track 1R and a 5.1 acres track called Track 2R. The property is located within the Rural District of Precinct 2 and is served by well and onsite sewage facilities.
Do you recommend approval?
Staff recommends approval of the replat as presented.
Okay. And do I have any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
We need to close the public hearing.
Do we have to close it?
Yeah, for each one.
Okay. Now, I'll close the public hearing, and now we will take a vote.
Now, I make a motion, Judge, to approve the Oak Country Estates tracks 1R and 2R.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve tracks 1R and 2R in Precinct 2. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Now, again, we're going from the Commissioners' Court into public hearing to discuss item number two.
Yep. The second item we have is a replat, Lot 239R of Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3. It is the combining of lots 239 and 240 of Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3, creating a 2.159 acres track called Lot 239R. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 3 and is served by public water and onsite sewage facilities.
Okay. Close the public hearing and go back into Commissioners' Court hearing at this time. Do I have any discussion on Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3, Lots 239R? Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I make the motion to approve the following replat of Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3, Lots 239R, Precinct 3.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Eagle, to approve the Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3, Lots 239R. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Now, we're going to adjourn from the Commissioners' Court, go into the public hearing on item number three. Mr. Head.
The third item we have is Lot 191R of Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3. It's the combining of lots 191 and 192 of Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3, creating a 2.985 acres track called Lot 191R. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 3 and is served by public water and onsite sewage facilities.
We're closing the public hearing now and going back into Commissioners' Court. Is there any discussion on the Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3?
We got to discuss before we close the hearing, please.
Okay. Do you have any discussion?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's go ahead and go into the Commissioners' Court. Now, I close the public hearing, back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion regarding Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3?
Judge, I make a motion to approve the following replat of Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3, Lot 101R, Precinct 3.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Dever, to approve the Rolling Creek Ranch, Phase 3, Lot 191R. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Now, I'm adjourning to Commissioners' Court, going back into the public hearing to discuss and consider for approval the Nassau Bay Lot. Mr. Head.
The fourth item we have is a replat of Lot 29R1 and 29R2, Block 4, Nassau Bay 1. It is a subdividing of Lot 29R, Block 4 of Nassau Bay 1. The proposed replat will be creating a 1.585 acres track called Lot 29R1 and a 1 acre lot called Lot 29R2. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 3 and will be served by public water and onsite sewage facilities.
Discussion. Okay. All right, I'll close the public hearing, going back to Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion or any discussion concerning the Nassau Bay lots 29R1 and 29R2?
Judge, I make the motion to approve the following replat, Nassau Bay 1, Lots 29R1 and 29R2, Block 4, Precinct 3.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Eagle, to approve the replat of the Nassau Bay lots 29R1 and 29R2. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Now, we're going to adjourn from the Commissioners' Court into a public hearing to discuss the variance on development permit regulations. Mr. Head.
The applicant would like to request a variance to Development Permit Regulations, Section 5.4B.1B, Water Quality Land Use District Standards, maximum densities for recreational vehicle parks. The variance request is being submitted to increase the maximum density for recreational vehicle parks from eight units to 18 units per gross acre. The proposed recreational vehicle park will be sold by A-Mud Water and A-Mud Sewer. The engineer has provided a letter of support, and A-Mud has provided a letter stating they have adequate capacity of water and sewer to support the density. The letters are in your packet with the proposed layout. Staff has no objections to this variance.
Any discussion?
Clint, this is in the Water Quality District, right?
Yes.
And they have public water and sewer, right?
Yes.
And A-Mud's agreed that there's enough capacity?
Yes, there's a letter in your packet.
Okay. I know that I've talked to the developer, and he's willing to do what it takes to comply with all the, what we want. And Judge, I'd make a motion to approve this variance on Section 5.4. Excuse me, I think you need to close the public hearing.
Okay. Good. Okay. We're now going to close the public hearing, going back into Commissioners' Court, and I interrupted you, Mr. Commissioner. Go ahead, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance request to Section 5.4B.1 of the Development Permit Regulations for Precinct 3.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner White to approve the variance in Section 5.4B.1B of the Development of the Permit Regulation, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries five zero. If that's all you have, Mr. Head?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Under financial, we have invoices that amount to $579,125.82. The auditor's office has given you advance copies of these invoices. We see no problems with them, and we recommend payment.
Okay.
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the invoices in the amount of $579,125.82.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the payment of the invoice is the amount of $579,125.82, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Carries five zero.
Judge, the next item are the monthly reports we've received, and I would like to just address item number H, District Clerk. We received her January and February reports. There were problems. She's working on it as well as my staff and one of her staff members, but we, it says received and reviewed. There's no, we have received it, but there are problems with both of those. So they're not on here until we can get the problem resolved. We're going to keep working on it. But everything else is in order, and ask that you approve the rest of these reports.
Further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the financial reports with the exception of item H to District Clerk. Is it a no?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the financial reports from the Audit Department with the exception of item H to District Clerk, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay.
Item number three, review of the county clerk's financial records for the fiscal year 2020. There was only one minor exception. It's been resolved, and we ask that you accept this report.
Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the 2020 review of the county clerk's financial records.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the 2020 review of the county clerk's financial records, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mrs. Kidd.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're down to miscellaneous. First item, consider and take appropriate action to approve the City of Granbury event application for National Day of Prayer request to use the courthouse parking lot on May 7, 2020, from 4:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I brought this up myself, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve this subject to any orders, executive orders, either from the President, from the Governor, or from this court. To the contrary, we're open, and hopefully we will be at that time, that we go ahead and approve this National Day of Prayer request, subject to any orders that may be issued prior to or at that time. Do I have a second to my motion?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Dever have seconded my motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Number two, authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal agreement between the Hood County Jail and Pecan Valley MHMR Region. Sheriff Dietz.
Judge, Commissioners, I talked to you at the last court about this agreement, this interlocal agreement. So Judge has the one that has our name on it and everything. We talked last time about the last page of this attachment, the cost, if we need them. This just covers the cost, keeps them the same, and makes it available for us to be able to get the psychiatric help and follow-ups and the different parts and pieces that go into this interlocal mental agreement. So we can do video teleconferencing, thanks to our IT department, and so we don't have to take them out of the facility, out of the jail. We just take them into the arraignment room and get them online with a psychiatrist or a nurse, whatever we need to do. And so these costs, again, I think I stated the last time, these are Medicaid rates, so they don't get any cheaper than that. So the Summerville County, they went out and looked at some other options through, they used Southern Health Partnership, and they were more expensive than all of this. So Summerville County is, at their next Commissioners' Court, is going to pass this also. They were offered the same thing we were, and Palopeno County was offered the same thing, and they've already done it. So unless you have any other questions, I'd ask that you approve this interlocal agreement.
Hope Beatty is really good to work with, too, isn't he?
Yes, he is.
He's okay, good. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the county judge to sign an interlocal agreement between Hood County Jail, Pecan Valley, MHMR Region.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Dever, authorize the county judge to sign an interlocal agreement between Hood County Jail and Pecan Valley, and second by Commissioner White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next item, consider and take appropriate action to approve date change for use of historic courthouse gazebo for the annual Bible reading marathon from May 1, 2020, to May 7, 2020. Again, I've talked to the ministers involved with this, and again, subject to the same proviso in item number one, that if the, there are no executive orders or other orders from anybody that's banning this deal, I move that we approve the date change for use of the historic courthouse gazebo for the annual Bible reading from May 1, 2020 to May 7, 2020. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Item number four, consider and take appropriate action to award contract on RFB 2020-004, non-specific aggregate materials purchasing. Ms. Nelda Walters.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. RFB 2020-004 was opened on March 16, 2020, at 2:00 p.m. in the Purchasing Department, which is considered a public place. We received two responses. Neither of these responses covered all the products that we need. We do write in our RFBs that we may award an alternate vendor or more than one as the winner. And we've been doing this for, since before I came here. So I've talked to Don Lenny, and it's our opinion and recommendation that we award both Fort Worth Crushstone as the primary and Vulcan Materials as the alternate.
To clarify that, Judge and Commissioners, I know Bruce knows what's going on. One vendor may be broke down or may not have material at that day, so we got a hot shot job going on. We can go to the next vendor. I agree with this and think we should carry on with this.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a second to Commissioner Dever's motion to care?
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Dever, second by Commissioner White, regarding the vendor on the aggregate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Are you on the next one, too?
I am. Okay, this has to do with the adult, not the adult, but the external audit team. We put out this bid, and we've received six responses. And I know that we wrote in there that the court may want to do interviews. It's my suggestion that if that is what y'all want to do, that we look at the pricing and pick the top couple of vendors, because that is most likely who we would select anyway at the lowest cost for the county. And arrange interviews with things as they are right now. I would suggest that we do a workshop, but I don't know that you can really keep the public people safe. And you're going to be doing interviews, so maybe you need to do something else. I'm not sure how y'all can do the interviews, you know, privately, but with everybody being able to be there as far as all of you, Shelley Berry with Adult, Becky, and myself. Because I know that room back there is very small, and it'd be close quarters. I don't know if you could call like a...
Here's a thought, Nelda. We could do it here.
Can we clear the courtroom?
Yes. We could do it here and clear the courtroom.
Okay, and that's fine with me.
Y'all agree with that?
I do.
I'm just trying to be mindful of everybody.
Yeah, we usually go into closed session, but I think we could have it here and then clear the courtroom for executive session.
And that's fine with me. So my suggestion would be to decide now if we're going to call the first two or three. You should have all the figures in your packets. I don't know if you've reviewed them or not. But basically, it would be Kenner Masters and Lunsford, Dr. Morgan and Young, and Idy Bailey. Those are the ones that are the less costly for the county.
See, the Kenner Masters and Lunsford and Idy Bailey and who?
Okay, Kenner Masters and Lunsford used to do our work many years ago. When I first came here, they were doing it, and they stayed for another cycle. It was then that the Commissioners' Court decided that we needed to change, and that's when we started doing it every five years. I don't know of anything that they did incorrectly. They weren't dismissed for, you know, not doing the right thing or anything like that. It's just a change was decided, it was needed.
So you're saying that we need to take like the top, the three?
I would say at least two.
Two?
Yeah. And the other one would be Patillo, Brown, and Hill. And they have also done our taxes, I mean, our audits before. So we could talk to them. But that being said, I do have all the replies over there for you guys. I would say interview the top two, but go ahead and go through all of those and grade them, because it is a weighted evaluation. And that way, nobody may jump at you, you know, from their score, well, maybe I need to take a closer look at them.
Am I allowed to make any comments during this time?
I didn't hear you, Ms. Kidd. Can you go ahead?
About what?
The third one that is on the list?
No, not right now.
Nothing, Judge.
What was her question?
She wanted to make some comments about the third vendor, but no, we don't do that in public.
Okay. So what is anybody's recommendation that we do here? That we have a workshop and do it here?
Well, Judge, I'm going to be off the court next year. This is something that's going to affect you court members and the two coming in. So my opinion is, I like the top two, interview and go forward, but y'all are the ones going to be stuck with them, not me.
And if you decide you don't want to interview them, you don't have to. It's not worded that you have to interview them. It said you may want to interview them.
Are all of them in Hood County?
No, none of them.
All right, tell me where Kenner Masters and Lunsford.
They're near Waco.
Okay, and what about Usher Morgan is, isn't he?
You know, they may have a branch here, but I think it's the one in Stevenville, I want to say, maybe, but I don't remember all their addresses. But they may be in Stevenville, the branch that responded to the...
But there's a branch here. I'm sure I'll see that name.
I don't know. There may be.
There is. There used to be.
But Tillow, C., Brown, and Hill, where are they?
They are also near Waco.
Waco. And what about Beasley and Mitchell?
Do you not remember, but I could look through the packet if you need me to. I have it here. I could open one of y'all's and look.
Okay, what about Conley and Company?
They're new. Both of those are brand new to me. Never heard of them before.
Okay. And Idy Bailey, they're here, aren't they?
Yeah, they're basically in the area. I don't think they're in Granbury, but they're close.
And that's who's doing it now?
Yes.
When do we have to make a decision?
Okay, we generally like to award this the in June, by June, in order to let them have time to get whatever they need to do, because adult probation ends their year a month sooner than the county does, so that they can get geared up to do first adult probation and then juvenile probation and then start on the counties.
So if we let it play out and try to set something in late April, like mid-April, let this month play out, we already got what is today, March 24th? Let it play out for the rest of this month in the first two weeks in April, and maybe go ahead and set up something to interview. How many do you think we can do in a workshop or just an interview here? Two, three?
However many you want.
Are you going to have some questions for us to look?
I do not have, I do not have questions of them. I know nothing about the audit process. So that, those questions are going to need to come from y'all or the auditor or Shelley Berry.
Okay. Well, I saw Ms. Kidd raising her hand up there, so that would be a job for you, is to make out a list of questions for me and to get with anybody else that you need to talk to and have us a list of real good questions. need to talk to and have us a list of real good questions to try to elicit what information we need from these people to compare apples to apples to apples, okay?
And I think it would be good for you to have a list of questions you ask each one of them the very same question.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Apples to apples to apples.
I agree.
Means the same question. So, what we would do, and I don't want to give it to them beforehand, I just ask them and see what, my recommendation is to see their response to these questions when we ask them here at a closed session meeting since we're hiring professionals.
I agree. And also, when you all go to grade these, please do not consult one another. Please keep it your opinion. That is the only way the grading works. To be totally advised.
Is your grading form we use to grade?
Yes, there is.
It'd be in the packet?
It's in the packet. I even included all of the quotes that they gave and everything as well, in case you didn't have them right in front of you. Everything's in the envelopes for you guys.
Okay. Ms. Kidd, I think we will work with you. You look at those questions at the back, they're quotes. And that, since you're the one that's going to be working with these folks and supplying them, let's let it fit together and then ask them so it looks like we know what we're doing when we ask them a question and be able to grade them, okay? Maybe get a grading system. I think that's real good. So, I guess we're going, do y'all want to just table this until we see how it comes? About, when is the next, two meetings from now? When, when, what is that date to see, put it on that court's agenda so we could?
Twenty eighth of April.
How about the twenty eighth of April? Now, let's get, what the one before that then would be?
Fourteen would be, fourteen would be the next one.
Yeah, let's, see that would, you know, that gives us three weeks to kind of see what this COVID-19 is going to do. Can we just go ahead and agree to put it on the docket for Tuesday?
You can actually keep the later April date if you wish, as long as we get it done by June, like mid-June, late June. Normally...
So, if we had a meeting on the twenty eighth of April, we still got a month to decide, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the day, do you just table it until?
But please know that the weighted evaluation has been published and that is the main thing we go by. I mean, your opinion is valued and needed. But the main weighted evaluation and, and how it's weighted is already in the packet. It's the way we, we have done it in the past. But that's the main thing we go off of, whoever comes the closest to a hundred percent.
Okay, so we're going to put it on the docket, we're going to table it until the twenty eighth of April, Tuesday, April twenty eighth. And... So, at that time, we're going to set a date then to interview these people.
And you could actually do it right after, or right, you know, as the last item of Commissioners Court and that way you can clear the, the courtroom if need be so that we can keep our spacing going.
Just go ahead and notify the people beforehand that they need to be here?
Yes, sir.
That's an idea, we could just go ahead and do that. That's a good idea.
And I would, I will ask them to limit themselves to no more than two people. You know, one is better, but you know, two is acceptable.
And we're going to see all six of them?
I, I personally don't think that we will select one based off of just pricing that is not first or second, the lowest. But in the, in the reviews that you do and the evaluations, when you're reading about these vendors, you may see one that you think would do a better job and you will grade them accordingly. And if they do come into that higher percentage, then you may want to have them here. Cause when you're through grading them, and I know you probably won't do this till after the interviews, we can always call them back.
Well, it's not that much disparity like it is in a lot of bids, you know? What is it, like $11,000 between the lowest and the highest? And when you're talking about something like that, it's not that big a deal. Really, I want to save all the money we possibly can save, but it's not what I would call cost prohibitive. If they've got something that, some software or some knowledge or whatever that they do that could do it, it may be useful. I think we should just try to get all of them and try to see, how long do you think it should be for each one of them? Ten minutes for each one of them?
I would say no more than ten or fifteen.
Let's try to do it, we can use some discretion on a thing. Let's tell them, what, ten minutes that we talk to them and if we run over a little bit or whatever, we can do that. So, let's have all six of them be here then on April the twenty eighth, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Be the last item on here, clear everybody out and then go ahead and, and do it at that time. And of course, before that, Ms. Kidd, we get together and look at the evaluation and the questions that we would want to know, that an auditor would want to know for somebody to do this job, okay?
So, I want to be clear, you're going to turn to Becky for questions and then you will all individually do your own evaluations without conference, okay? I'm just trying to keep it as fair as I can.
Are you good with the one we're proposing?
Yeah, I don't mind. I do know that, it seemed like one of these was even near out of state or maybe El Paso, so I don't know if they'll have a problem coming here or not, but...
They have a problem, we don't want them.
I understand, but I'm just saying that.
They don't want to show up here like that, that tells me a lot.
Yeah, and I, and I, I mean, maybe they will, maybe they'll jump on the next one, I have no idea.
Let's ask them anyway if they took to the trouble of coming up there and doing that. So, I guess, do we need a motion on that to say that, that we should set this at the Tuesday, April the twenty eighth, 2020 Commissioners Court meeting? That way we can put all six of them up there if they will come. We will have questions for them, we will have the evaluations and we'll take and try to come up with the decision.
I heard from you that you was wanting to, your suggestion was to take it down to two or three.
Well, and that's only because of the pricing. If you look at the five-year pricing, it's a...
So, if we, so further on that, if we, if we did that, we took it down to two or three, how would the process work? We'd go through all the packets?
Same, yeah, same way.
We would grade them all and then take the two or three top ones? Those are the ones would come in for the personal interview, is that what you suggested?
You can do it either before or after. It might help you in your evaluation if you do it before.
Do what? The?
The evaluation.
The evaluation. We don't need to do an, an interview to do the evaluation though, do we?
No.
We do that off of the packet.
Yep.
Cause it's, the instructions are in there.
They are, and if they don't follow those instructions, that's when you go, okay, well, these guys don't really know what they're doing, you know?
So, I'm, what I'm hearing from, from Nelda is that we really don't have to bring in all six. We're trying to narrow it down before we get to the personal interviews is what I think I'm hearing you say.
Right. In, in an RFP, which is what this is, you have the ability to negotiate even down to what they call a BFO, best and final offer. So, you're going to go with normally who is less expensive for the county to save the county money. And that's why I said that you could consider the lower ones. Because most likely, you're not going to go for the higher ones because then you have to justify why you are. Now, with an evaluation that gives them, you know, four gold stars, yeah, that may, you know, figure into why you do. But we don't know what that is at this point. So, it's, it's really your call, you are the court and I work for y'all.
So, are we talking about interviewing and then grading?
That's what it has, we have been talking about. But you're going to have the packets if you choose to go ahead and do that. I'm, that's fine. I go off of your opinion.
Well, y'all want to review the packets and then try to see if we can narrow it down to three?
We might separate that away Judge.
Yeah.
How about if we, if I give you the whole packet, you go and you look at them and grade them, give them back to me and I can try and have them ready, if you can have them ready, by the first court of April. And that way we know who we want to call.
So, then at that court meeting, we would decide then who we're going to call in at the next court meeting?
Yes.
Which is on the fourteenth, the Tuesday, the fourteenth?
Yes. I believe that's what was said.
Of course, all of this is still subject to the, any change in the COVID-19 restrictions of doing anything.
That is true.
Of course, all this stuff that we're doing is subject to the COVID-19. Is there anything that, when we reviewed the packet, you know, it's like me, I can review anything that has to do with the legal stuff, so can Dave Eagle. When it comes to nuclear physics, I couldn't review anything. I, I don't know what I'm looking at, don't know anything. Do we need to have somebody like Ms. Beck, Ms. Kidd here, who is an auditor, to look at it to see if what's in that packet is everything necessary that we need to make an evaluation? I'd like her, for her to, is everything in each packet? Why are you shaking your head?
Well, what, what's going on here?
Yeah.
We're new, these three of us are new, have never seen this thing before. We have no idea what and how this works and we're trying to understand what we're supposed to do.
I understand.
That's where we're struggling. We knew that, I've never seen before.
We have had some trouble with certain vendors.
Okay.
And, and we, we just have to be careful with excluding.
If we exclude them, we have to have justification?
Yes, sir.
I want to get back to my question though.
Yes, sir.
In that packet, somebody like me, I've worked in big numbers before. If I have everything, when I look in that packet to make an intelligent decision as to be able to grade each one of these six people, these six audit firms?
Yes, sir.
Don't need anything else?
I wouldn't think so, but I don't personally know because I know I can't do that. I don't have the expertise some of y'all have in budgets and things like that. So, I know I can't do it and I understand if you feel like you might not be as versed in it as some people are. But I need...
Well, I'm, I'm still saying that I think that when I get my packet, that I'm going to probably discuss it with Becky Kidd and go over that to see if there's any information that I would have liked for that packet to contain about these prospective auditors.
I don't think we're allowed to do that.
We're not?
Cause I think Becky and Shelley are going to have to grade a packet too, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, oh, you're going to have to grade it too? Oh, okay.
Yes, it does.
The grading sheet tells you what to look for in the packet.
And if they don't address it, then that's a black mark for them.
I get you.
Because I have to publish what I'm, what it's going to be graded on so that they will know how to respond to it.
Judge, I like the idea of getting the packet and then on the fourteenth of April, come back to court again after we reviewed those packets and then make a decision what we're going to do about who we're going to interview by the twenty eighth. Does that work?
That is...
Cause I haven't seen this stuff yet, I have no idea. What it's, what that grading system looks like or how I'm going to do it.
It's very simple, it's not a hard grading system. There are percentages for each one, each question. You have a range, it can go, and I don't, there are different ranges for different questions because they're more important questions. But say the range is 15%, you can grade anywhere from one to 15, depending on how you feel they address that question.
Okay, we're beating this to death. I get what you're doing, I agree with you Commissioner Cotton, that's what we should do. We get the packets, we look at them, we come back here on the fourteenth. Hopefully, we've got enough knowledge that we can have it trimmed down to three, that we will tell them to come back to the meeting on Tuesday, the twenty eighth of April, 2020.
Second.
It sounded like a motion in second to me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, motions were made in second, did that affect, you have that Ms. Lang? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Consider and take appropriate action on Evergreen Solutions' compensation philosophy. Ms. Welber.
Yes, good morning Judge, Commissioners. I believe each one of you has seen this form in the past. If there's someone this morning that doesn't have a copy of it, I have extras if anybody needs one. Evergreen Solutions has just asked for guidance off of this form, I just need one form and this is how they're going to move forward on the compensation study. Now, I would like to say that this has nothing to do with COVID-19, but unfortunately, the process is going to slow down with our country slowing down. I spoke with Evergreen yesterday and they said that it may be very difficult for them during this time to get information from our peers. So, I just want to let you know that there is a possibility that the study will not be available at the timeframe they had originally stated. So, if you're ready, we'll look at the very first question. What market position does the, does Hood County want to be in relation to our peers? What this means is, do we want to be a leader? And not that we don't want to be a leader in how we treat our employees, but it would mean that we would be willing to pay approximately 60% more than what our peers are paying. Or do we want to be in alignment with our peers to where we are, we are competitive with those around us who are our size, our tax base, very comparable to what our current county is? Or do we want to lag? Do we want to just stray behind our peers, maybe not pay quite as much as what they do, but yet we offer great benefits?
I love this nomenclature they've come up with.
Kind of barbecues you even.
Yeah, it sure does. Anyway, just a comment, sorry.
I understand, not a problem. When I spoke with Evergreen yesterday, I more or less indicated to her that more than likely, our county would like to see an alignment with our peers. We don't want to do anything extravagant, that's not what we're out for. And also, I reminded her that we offer our, our employees very good benefits. I believe our retirement is top notch compared to our peers. I don't know of anyone that probably offers the plan that we offer. Right now, we contribute top as far as county and so does our employees. And currently, we have a great health benefit also.
I have one of five like the line.
All right.
And I think when we started this, we were trying to get in line with other counties of our size and budgets and everything. So, I think a line would be the best.
Okay, all right. The second one is, does the organization plan on making any changes to total compensation? I told her I didn't think we had, we had any huge plans of making any overall changes to our compensation. It's going to be looked at per position and department, they're also looking at the departments.
My question would be no on that one. Yeah, my answer would be no.
That's mine too, no.
I agree with that.
I agree with that, be a no.
Okay. The next one, what salary structure design does Hood County want to administer? Now, currently, we have a step plan in place and Evergreen stated that that is very common in the state of Texas. She said that a lot of entities use the step plan in Texas. That's not what we necessarily have to stay with. I did visit with the auditor a couple of weeks ago and I believe she likes the open range.
I've studied that, too, also. My first deal was stay at the step plan, but if it makes it easier on y'all, the treasurer, the auditor, personnel, I'm for the open range.
Well, it could be a lot easier in aligning people or bringing new employees in.
Yes.
Of course, that's the judge and the auditor that do the majority of the budget, so I'll be happy to put down whatever y'all think is best.
I agree with Commissioner Dever, you know, about the open range.
I do, too. You know, you could get somebody in here that's very qualified, you really want them, and then somebody that's not, it makes it maybe harder to budget, doesn't it?
I'll get there, sir.
You kind of like the open range, too, didn't you, Becky?
Yes, sir.
You just kind of more in favor of that?
We've...
And that's kind of why I changed my stripes. I checked on my step, then I started talking to Melissa, HR, and she said she talked to you, and you prefer the open range. And the more I read about it, I said, well, like the judge is saying, to make it more easier to adjust wages sometime.
It can be more flexible, yes.
I know, I know other counties use open range, I've seen that, you know, you can see it, you can find it on their websites, you can tell that they're...
And that, I think, does make it easier for applicants when they're looking at positions that are available. It's easier for them to look at also, yes, if it's posted on the website.
I also like it for another reason. Sheriff, we've been an open-range county since the 1800s, haven't we, and still are?
We still are.
That's right. If any cattle get on the roads, it's called an open range. Beware, drive slow, okay? So...
Open range?
Open range.
Okay.
I agree with the judge, it sounds like a cowboy riding out, riding out on the prairie.
That's right.
No fences.
That's right, no fences, no boundaries, okay, that's it.
It's an open range.
Then the last one, just ask, how do you want your salaries to progress? Currently, we do an annual step increase on October 1st. That's in alignment with the physical budget. It's usually not based off of merit, however, department heads are supposed to contact the court if they do not want to give one of their employees a step increase. However, I'm not aware of that ever happening in the past.
I like the hybrid, myself.
I do, too.
Yeah, I think it gives you flexibility that way.
That sounds the most fair you can, they can kind of have something to look forward to, but understand also that if they perform exceptionally, they're going to probably get paid exceptionally, so...
Yeah, I agree with that. The time is just a factor.
That's right.
That's just a factor in it.
Based on the budget, yes.
Okey.
Okay.
Hybrid, okay. Thank you, you're doing an excellent job, you're doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
Okay.
You don't need a motion on that one, do you? You already did it.
Yeah, we've already done it.
In a.
Okay, I'm looking, all those in favor for adjournment?
Get up and leave.
Okay.
Don't forget to give blood.
Yeah, give blood.